Right this way to your table, sir. Your Don Perignon, sir.
Thank you.
Do you care for some water?
Please, sir.
Your water, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear heavenly Father, we bow our heads humbly for you this evening to give thanks for the opportunities we have in life today. The, the times that we, uh, we come together, Lord, faced with the numerous decisions we have to make, uh, the, the decisions that, that you've given us this right to exercise. I pray tonight, Father, that you give our attending citizens the courage and the words to bring forth their opinions, views of the subjects we're faced with, uh, this time of year. And I pray that, uh, you will have this council, uh, sit and, and, and hear them as they speak and, and truly listen to their, their concerns so that, that we might know as this body where the citizens wish the city to go, where, where our future sits, Father. I ask that you'll follow us all as we go through the remainder of this evening, lead and guide us, forgive us where we fail you, for it is in your name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Chris. For announcement and, and events, Fran, you want to come enlighten us?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. City offices will be closed next Monday, September 3rd, in observance of Labor Day. Uh, don't miss the next performance in the Haltum City Concert in the Park Series. Kanta, a well-known local band, will give a free concert Thursday, September 6th, in Haltum Road Park. The music will begin at 7:00 PM. Bring your lawn chairs, picnic supper, and enjoy the lantern beat of Kanta. This will be the last in the series this year. The Gary Hires Memorial Softball Tournament will take place Saturday, September 15th, at North Park. The annual event not only memorializes the fallen Haltum City officer, it benefits a police department program that provides gifts and food to needy residents during Christmas time. Those who attend the tournament are asked to bring a new unwrapped toy or a non-perishable food item as a donation. They will also be accepting cash donations, too. Concessions will be available at the tournament. For information, you can contact Officer Vicki Harden, and her phone number's 817-707-7443. The tournament is sponsored by the Haltum City Police Officers Association and serves of, as a kickoff for October Crime Prevention Month activities. Um, the games will actually start at 9:00 AM that day. Uh, the activities, bounce houses and food and music, will start at 11:00 AM on the 15th. The city is working with a paper retriever program and is collecting paper for recycling to benefit the new Haltum City Public Library. Bins for collecting paper are yellow and green and are located at the library, at fire station number three, which is the Water Tower, not the one on Broadway. It's the Water Tower at 820 and Haltum Road, and at the Senior Center. Acceptable items include newspapers, magazines, shopping catalogs, office and school paper, mail, and phone books. Unacceptable items are tissue paper, food wrap, or corrugated cardboard. Funds will be used to purchase furniture for the children's area at the new facility. And speaking of recycling, Curbside Recycling is about to go citywide. Beginning in October, every Haltum City residence will receive a bin to be used to recycle paper, plastics, metals, and glass. Watch for details coming during September in city water bills and in special mailed notices. You can also check the city's website at www.haltumcitytx.com. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the upcoming Trinity Trash Bash for 2007. Last year, at about this time, Mayor Lanford issued a proclamation proclaiming September as Water Awareness Month, and basically the proclamation, proclamation said it all, that water's a very important thing to us here, well, to everybody all over the, the country, but especially in Texas where we, last year had such a drought, and this year, um, with the flooding and now the, the dryness that has finally arrived, um, we need to learn how to conserve and how to protect our water supply, which happens to be the Trinity River. Um, last year, Haltum City Mayor Bill Lanford, uh, hosted the press conference for us, and this year he's passing along the Trinity Trash Bash torch to Mayor Robert Cluck of Arlington. Mayor Lanford last year laid down the gauntlet and made good on his claim that his city could beat other metroplex cities when it came to picking up litter and teaching residents about the importance of clean water. At 11:00 AM Thursday, that's this Thursday, August 30th, Mayor Cluck will host a press conference to kick off the Trinity Trash Bash for 2007. Mayor Cluck will encourage volunteers to help clean trash from Trinity River tributaries while challenging local communities to spread the word about the importance of clean water and water conservation. The conference will be held at the east entrance to River Legacy Park at 3020 West Collins Street. Other than Haltum City and Arlington, communities participating in this year's bash include Benbrook, Burleson, Carrollton, Dallas, Flower Mound, Fort Worth, Grand Prairie, Grapevine, Irving, Keller, North Richland Hills, Richland Hills, The Colony, and Watauga. Kaufman County will also participate. Information about specific events in these communities, along with contact information and other details, is available at the new Trash Bash website, trinitytrashbash.com. This year's event has been proven to be a great partnership among communities. North Richland Hills City Cable filmed a public service announcement, and I wish I could share that with you right now, but you'll see it if you watch a rebroadcast of this meeting on our cable station, and it's going to be uploaded onto our website. Um, it stars, um, oh, a fellow that did some volunteer work for the city, um, and the, uh, manager of the Diamond Oaks Country Club plays the waiter, and it's a, it's a really good little piece that City Cable did for us at no cost. Kaufman County was responsible for ordering gifts for volunteers. Irving got the website up and running and is reprinting an educational coloring book for all of us. And Arlington, of course, is hosting the press conference. According to the Trinity River Authority, litter is the number one polluter, polluter of the river. T R A donates $5,000 annually to the Trash Bash to encourage participating Trinity Trash Bash communities to continue their work in cleanup and education. And to volunteer in Haltum City, please don't, download a form from our website or call me at my office at 222-7767, and I thank you for your attention after all that.
Thank you, thank you, Fran. Uh, right quick, um, I missed when the, uh, Gary Hires Memorial Softball Tournament will start. What time?
9:00 AM.
9:00, 9:00 AM?
The same day as the Trash Bash, so.
Okay.
September 15th.
And, um, will there be a list of acceptable items for folks to recycle?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is there a, is there a list on the website, or?
Not, not at the present time. Um, we're working on, with ISI to get the information together so we can post it.
Yeah, because at our house, we, uh, we sometimes, we forget which exactly the numbers of the plastics, that's the big one, is the plastics that.
It's basically one through seven, everything except number six.
One through six?
One through seven, but no six, excluding six.
Oh, one through seven, but excluding six?
Right.
How long do you think I can remember that?
[laughing].
Just kidding.
Call me.
You're a liar. All right, thank you.
One through five to seven, very good.
I appreciate it. The, uh, next item on the agenda is another, uh, presentation. This is a proclamation. I'm just gonna read it from, from the dais here. This is in recognition of National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in September. Whereas 22.2 million people in the United States have faced a substance use disorder in the past year, and all deserve to experience the many benefits of recovery. And whereas treatment is cost-effective, with some measurements showing benefit-to-cost ratio of up to seven to one, with substance use disorder treatment costing $1,583 per person on average, and having a monetary benefit to society of nearly $11,487 for each person treated. And whereas we must recognize the financial savings associated with treatment services and ensure that such, such services are readily available to those who need assistance. And whereas to help achieve this goal, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the City of Haltum City invite all residents to participate in National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, Bill Lanford, Mayor of the City of, City of Haltum City, by virtue of the authority vested in me to hereby proclaim the month of September 2007 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, and call upon the people of Haltum City to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's theme, which is join the voices of recovery, saving lives, and saving dollars. Thank you, Brenda, and, uh, I encourage everybody to, uh, to, uh, recognize the importance of supporting those, uh, in our community, uh, that suffer from that, and, and to support them in any way that we can. Next on the item, uh, the agenda is, uh, item one, our monthly financial report for July. Joel Welch, our finance director, will bring that to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Enclosed in your agenda packet was, of course, agenda item number one concerning the fiscal year 2007, uh, monthly financial report for the period ending July 31st, 2007. This is encompassing 10 months of the 12-month fiscal year. Uh, beginning, I'm gonna just kind of go fund by fund for our major operating funds tonight. Uh, normally I kind of go topically, but I'll just, as we get closer to the end of the year, I'll talk a little more specifically about funds. But, uh, beginning with the general fund, uh, we are seeing a situation on the, uh, revenue side of the House that is, is, is pretty much satisfactory. We are seeing property tax revenues being close to the budget. We are seeing sales tax collections that look like they could well exceed the budget by about 4% possibly. We are, um, we are looking at franchise tax collection, collections running very close to the budget, and that's not always easy to do. Those are very hard to, to project, and it looks like we're coming in very close to the budget. Our licenses and permits have benefited greatly from the permits that were taken out for the Sarah Lee Construction. Uh, licenses and permits will, uh, will creep very close to $600,000 this year, which is about twice the norm for us, a, a very positive development. Uh, our fines and, uh, forfeitures have already exceeded the fiscal year budget, uh, well in excess of a million dollars. It's been a, uh, a, a year of, of a lot, of revenue coming in. There's been a, a great deal more court activity, there's been a great deal more law enforcement activity. At this point in the general fund, we are still projecting the possibility, the distinct possibility of adding, right add a million dollars to the fund balance this fiscal year, and that is on the basis of, of stronger-than-expected revenues, and also all of the operating departments pretty much staying within their budgets for the year. If you notice in the executive summary, I always give you, uh, tips on which departments are 5% or more variant from where I think they should be budget-target-wise for the fiscal year. And all of the examples this month were people that were more than 5% beneath where I thought that they would be at this point of the fiscal year. There were no departments that were, uh, 5% above at this point, and that's a very, very good sign going into the last couple of months of the fiscal year. I want to talk about the Water and Sewer Fund as a separate item, uh, and a, and a few agenda items around number six or, or so, we'll be talking about the Water and Sewer Fund and, uh, a, a plan for, for dealing with the status of the fund, and I'd like to talk more about the, the, the financial position of the fund at that time, so I'm going to, to pass on that right now. The Drainage Utility is, I'm projecting it to be very close to break even for the year, which is a good thing. We had budgeted for a drawdown of fund balance, and I think at this point, we're gonna get extremely close to a break even position. Uh, revenues have held well and expenditures have been, have been very careful and well-managed this year, so the Drainage Utility looks in pretty good shape going into the end of the year. Uh, the Crime District, we're gonna have to be very, very careful with it over the, uh, the remainder of the, the fiscal year. I know we're already almost all the way through August, and we have just September, but, uh, as I look at the Crime District on, on the expenditure side of the House, we're just gonna have to be very, very careful with it over the remaining five weeks or so of this fiscal year. The Economic Development Corporation, uh, revenues continue to exceed expectations. Expenditures are well in control, and the Economic Development Corporation is in, in a very, very good state at this point of the fiscal year and looks to be headed toward a good finish. Uh, as far as the investment report goes, uh, our total portfolio went down close to a million dollars in the past month. This time of year, that is not unusual. We're drawing down the property tax collections that were paid in between October and February. This happens every year as we spend on our capital projects. The weather is usually most conducive to doing a lot of our capital projects during the summer, the library's under construction, the, uh, you know, and, and we're drawing down on tax revenues, so it's not unusual for the balance to begin to fall off this time of year. The, uh, the portfolio, uh, is yielding, uh, right at 5.12%, which puts us solidly above our benchmark of 4.86%. Uh, this is particularly interesting in, in light of the fact that our weighted average maturity is 148 days. Our benchmark is based upon 180 days, so we're earning more than the benchmark, uh, by a good 30 basis points, and we're doing it in about six weeks fewer time. And we're doing that, and we're still staying remarkably liquid, sufficiently liquid to meet our obligations, and we're investing in, in only instruments that are according to policy and are the right kind of investments for us to get a solid earning from with no risk. And then finally, the, the last thing I want to mention is something that, uh, is coming to our attention, and it's something that ordinarily would be addressed when we, uh, bring the fee ordinance update to the council, which would be at the second council meeting of next month, but I'm gonna mention it now because it will probably be absent from that analysis and absent from our recommendations. There, uh, there is a, a situation in the Water and Sewer Fund that we are trying to get our arms around, we don't really understand. We have a trend currently where sales are down. We're finding that as a percentage of billing, that penalties are down. So, sales are down, people more often than not are paying their bills more on time than they have been in the last few years, but yet, when we do have to secure account and close an account, we're having to write off bigger outstanding balances. And that's two trends going this way and another trend going this way, and we're trying to get a grasp on, on both the magnitude and the reason for this. I see some furrowed brows, and that's the same furrowed brows that we had when we began to realize the problem. Uh, what is, I'll give you some dollar amounts for, as in explanation of it. In the last fiscal year, by year end, we wrote off $73,000 in bills we couldn't collect. So far this year, we have written off, I believe, $113,000 with two months to go. And so, we are, no, I take that back, it's $133,000 because it's twice what we budgeted. And so, it's a, it's a situation we don't understand, we're gonna be working on it, but it may cause us to have to, to meet with the council and talk about possibly some modifications to our processes. Not only looking at the deposit rates, but, but, uh, potentially how long we go before we secure an account and such things. So, uh, I'm, I'm telling the council about it tonight just to kind of let you know that, that we, we are seeing a problem and that we're gonna be coming back with a, with a good analysis of this, but it probably won't be done in time for, uh, when we would normally be bringing this to you with the, the fee ordinance. And this is already not a normal process because the, the Water and Sewer item that we'll be doing and a few items would normally come up in about a month also, and it's coming up tonight, so it's already a little bit strange.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, Joel, on, on these water bills that, that people leave, and they leave that enormous amount, is there any way we can tack that back on to the next person who opens that account but, uh, levy it over a year's time, or some way to recoup? So, I, I know when we do the, the fees, uh, we increase the fees or whatever, the signup fees, but that's not enough to cover the bills at certain times. Is there any ways that we can adjust that?
It really wouldn't be right to make the next person who lives in the place pay the delinquent balance of the previous person.
And there's no way we can go back and catch the back one because he's already gone?
We are, we have measures, and we're working all of the measures we can. We have, uh, we use collection services. I mean, we're already using a number of methods to try to catch these people now. We, we talk to other cities, we share information between cities on customers who have a tendency to move from town to town and leave outstanding balances in such places.
But if it's rental property, it stays, the, the, the water's in the renter's, in the owner's name, so it doesn't, we don't, not affect it that way?
If it stays in the owner's name, we typically don't have a problem.
Right.
If it's in the, the renter's name, we frequently have problems catching these people, and it does leave us in a, in a difficult position. Currently, we require a $120 deposit. And based upon our analysis, when we created the $120 deposit, we felt that it was sufficient, and, uh, that's, that's only been in place for two years. And yet, we're finding that our, our write-offs are, are, are well in excess of the amounts that, are well in excess of the deposit amounts that we're using right now. So, it's gonna be something that we're gonna be studying and coming back to the council with some analysis and some possible recommendations, and I have lit up the entire dais.
You have. Thank you, Mr. Herr. Mr. Cabano.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was gonna talk about the, the TML article that they had, um, referring to a, a cooperation between cities where if one person runs up a utility, and they specifically pointed out a utility bill in one city and they move to another city, the corresponding cities that all work together would then be, would legally be able to garnish, I don't say garnish, you know what I'm talking about.
Collect for the other city.
Be able to collect fees for that other city and pay it back to them through this cooperation. And, uh, I, I, I don't know if that would work with us here, but in, in our proximity to each city, I think we're close enough, and, and I think we have a relationship with, with enough of these cities around here, that if one person moves from here to Richland Hills, if we have that agreement in place, and I believe, if I'm correct, the way I was reading the article, we do have that ability in Texas right now, because it was a Panhandle, a Panhandle city.
I was gonna say, in fact, it's been done in the Panhandle, and it's been successful in the Panhandle, and those cities are not remotely close to each other geographically, but yet it has been successful in the Panhandle. It is something that a number of us in the local area has, have been trying to get started as an initiative. It was taken, uh, under advisement by the council of governments, with the council of governments, uh, doing the studying of it. I, I can't tell you where they are with it right now, but, uh, a number of us had talked about it a while, and the count, like I said, the council of governments said that they would like to see if they couldn't organize something, perhaps covering both county, both Tarrant and Dallas County, I mean, just a, a wide-ranging, uh, database. So, there's, there is something in the works, I just wish I could tell you where it is right now.
How, how long ago was that? I mean, we're talking six months, a year, two years?
The last time I asked about this was last year.
Okay. Can we light a fire under them? I, I, I have, I've heard city, uh, the council of governments, and I hear study every time after they're mentioned, and a long period after that, um, I'd like to get something from them besides the study.
I can sure, I can sure find out where they are.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. Back on what, what Dale had mentioned, uh, and, and this might label me with the stupid sticker, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. Um, in the construction industry, we use, uh, the process of leaning properties, but I know that services are a lot different than actual installation of materials, but have cities ever done that for, for similar situations? I mean, granted, if it was a $35 amount, wouldn't really be, uh, worth it, but if, I mean, 70-plus thousand dollars?
If we try to place a lien on the property, if it's, first of all, if it's the renter who runs up the, uh, the account, we can't do anything about the renter. We can't put a lien on the, on the landlord's property for the renter's outstanding bill. If it's a homeowner, we could, but, uh, the advantage of us putting a lien on the property is that we will get the money, at worst case, when the property sells at some unknown date in the future. So, so, so liens are an option for us, but they're not a, not a, not a, not a really good one.
Well, if, if it's, if it's a homeowner, then, I mean, for them to live there, they have to have service of water.
Mm-hmm.
For it to be a habit, a habit, somebody help me out.
Habitat.
Thank you.
To live in.
To live in. Uh, so, for them to continue to live there, they'd either have to pay the lien or pay an astounding deposit, right?
Our current policy is that once a, a customer is disconnected for failure to make payment, that, uh, they become what is called a risk customer, and the deposit begins to move up. Uh, it would be a regular, for example, if you've been secured one time, completely secured, your deposit the next time is the regular deposit times two. After the second time, it's the regular deposit times three. And, uh, so, so we have the means if we can, if we can get that worked out. I mean, to, to require a higher deposit and, and, and catch them. Our big problem is, even if they're a homeowner, they're, they're about to have the property foreclosed on, and they just pack up and move away. And so, it, the property goes to the bank, or worst of all, it goes to HUD. And I say worst of all, not because HUD's bad people, but, uh, when HUD gets a property, any lien that ever may existed on that property goes away, right then and there. HUD does not pass them on, they don't pay them.
Ms. Branson.
Well, um, I think the co-op between the cities is great, and I don't know if a municipality can do this or not, but, um, for example, the utility companies base your deposit off your FICO score on your credit report. Is there any way that a municipality can start doing deposits based like TXU and some of the others do?
This is something that we have been talking about. Uh, we are, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to learn how to do this and how it would work, and in fact, I have talked to some, uh, utility companies, and I've talked to banks, and I've even found out that if we were to subscribe to one of the services, that we could actually run the credit of people, and this is.
Yes.
It, that is a, a strategy that we are looking at in, in, as we revisit our deposit policy, of seeing if there's a possibility that we can take people with, with good credit rating and, and perhaps treat them a little differently than other people.
And you can, you can use a soft inquiry versus a hard inquiry, depending on, on what you're trying to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Or, uh, in the financial world, they also, depending on if it's in the payday lending world, or if it's in the FDIC-regulated world, they also have other agencies. I think we're all familiar with Telecheck, but they also have Teletrack and some other agencies that, and other, uh, companies that, uh, like DP Bureau that gathers data from everybody. I mean, maybe we could look at something along those lines, and then when it's reported back, if the other cities use it, most homes will only get two shots before they're out of socials to use.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and that is something that, and I'm glad, I would love it if you'd give me those names again, and because I wanna see which ones we have looked into so far, because we've looked into some of them, but we looked into primarily the big three credit agencies, but some of these others are some we probably should look at along with the others.
Well, the others are a, a accumulation, and they actually do the inquiry to the credit. We can talk about it offline, but there's three or four other agencies other than the three credit bureaus that we're, most of us are accustomed to that also do that sort of thing. So, I just thought it would, might be something.
It is part of a, of an overall strategy we've been, been trying to put together.
And that hurts a little more than just not being able to open up my water in Watauga. I mean, that affects me buying a car, renting, any, in a lot of other areas.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Joel, whenever the staff does this analysis, could you, um, put together some criteria that allows us to maybe discriminate whether this is a trend-based phenomenon or whether it's an event-based phenomenon? And how you might, some of the parameters you might wanna collect on that is geographical location, that might tend to say whether it was an event-driven, uh, or, and, and other categories that would help us discriminate, determine whether or not this is going to be something that is a trend in Haltum City? in Haldom City or whether it's more event-driven so that we react appropriately? Because I don't want to go down the road on this. If it's an event-based phenomenon and we change policy to affect something that's not really a trend?
We'll make sure we include that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Reese.
I was hoping someone else would have asked this question. But with this year, what we're facing and with the information we got at the budget about the homesteads, you know, coming down to give the appearance of rental going up, how much of these this year have been based off of rental versus homestead? I mean, is there?
I cannot give you the exact percentage.
Well, rough estimate would be wonderful.
In most of our cases with these, our past practice with, not on the write-off part, but on the, where we have to turn people off, about two-thirds of our regular disconnects are renters.
Any other questions for Joel? Thank you, sir. Entertaining motion to accept the monthly report. Mr. Cabano.
I make a motion that we accept the July financials as stated.
Mr. Sutton.
That's for a second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the monthly financial report for July 31, 2007. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Next is the consent agenda. This consists of items two, three, and four. The consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. Have a motion. Mr. Sutton.
Who to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Holcomb.
For a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items consisting of items two, three, and four. Any further discussion? Please register your votes. And that is unanimous. Next on the regular agenda, item five, the Little Fossil Creek Drainage Project. This is consideration and our action approving a project cooperation agreement with, for Little Fossil Creek Drainage Project with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Mr. Bennett Howell, our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council and residents. What we're presenting today is the contract between the Corps of Engineers and the city to construct the Little Fossil Creek Drainage Improvements, which this Corps and the city have been working on for close to 25 years. The contract, as you see in front of you, the total estimated cost for the project is approximately $13.5 million. The city's contribution will be approximately $6.8 million. The differences between the bonds that were issued in 2001 and now will be made up through grants from the Texas Parks and Wildlife, COG grants, and other such grants. The city can now apply for these grants once this contract is agreed upon between the city and the Corps. The next scheduling issue will be, the city is currently working with an engineering firm for the design cost, for the relocating, any of the utility lines that need to be moved, and for the right-of-way acquisitions. Those contracts should be finalized in the next couple of weeks. So next month, we should be presenting these contracts to the council. Then we will have meetings set up with the Corps over the next few weeks once the contract is approved so that we can set down an actual schedule of when construction may begin and all the details on the project. But the Corps is not committed to that of setting the schedule until they get this contract back from the city.
Thank you, Bennett. Any questions from the dais? Ms. Branson.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, will you go into more detail like we went into in the back as to what you plan on seeing at certain times? And also, for reference, for some individuals that don't know, because we have so many fossil creeks around here, what part of town that this drainage issue will address?
This will address from Midway down south of 121.
So it's in the lower end of town?
It's on the south end of town and it's Little Fossil Creek.
Right, well, I just, I mean, I think with Big Fossil, Little Fossil, and all the conversations that we've had about flooding, it would be.
It started at the Bellknap Bridge there, shortly thereafter.
Technically, it does start at the Bellknap, but most of the work's going to be south of Midway. There's about 300 feet between the Bellknap and the Midway Bridge where very little work is being done.
Oh, okay, okay.
And haven't there been quite a few conversations about, I don't know, the drainage right where it hits 121 down in that area that there's been, will it address that piece of it as well?
I'm not sure it does. She's talking about the, underneath 121, there's a drainage flumes that were kind of bottles up down there.
Yes.
It will address?
Yes.
Okay.
It will address everything through Haldom City.
So, and in the back?
From there, south of Haldom City, I mean, south.
Right.
They're not all the way through Haldom City, but from that point to the south, yes.
And so in the back, you talked about the things that individuals could expect to see first. So if I go driving down the street in two months, I'm not going to see, expect to see dirt moving because other things were taking place before. Will you explain what other things are going to be taking place?
Yeah, there's, it's still going to be a ways before anybody sees any dirt moving around down there. The earliest there might be dirt is doing some of the utility relows, especially with a water line or something like that. They might see something with that in the next 12 months. Right-of-way acquisitions certainly would be, would commence. Well, that could take anywhere from 18 months to 24 months. Hopefully, my hope is that it doesn't take 24 months. I think it's on a far, on the outside end. I don't, I don't think there's that many issues regarding right-of-way acquisition. There are some homes that are going to be purchased, but for the size of this project, the number of homes is, I think I can probably count them on probably two hands, I guess. Is it seven? Okay. And a horse bar. So it's, well, those are important and stuff, but it's not, it's not the 40 or 50 that you might typically want to see when, in dealing with a project like this. Before anybody sees the dirt, turn and know it's going to be a little bit still. What this agreement mainly does, at least from my perspective, it secures, it better secures congressional funding. The project has been kind of at the whim of some folks in Washington. And once this contract is executed, the funds are, I don't want to say guaranteed because I'm not sure anything's guaranteed with federal government, but it is least, less likely to be a pawn of somebody's political pressure. It's, because it's gotten to this benchmark in the Corps process. So they will continue funding it since it's reached this milestone. Beforehand, it was, it could have been cut or reduced, and we've seen that. What happened a couple of years ago, just about taking away everything and delaying the project for a whole year. That's, if this agreement were in place at that time, you would not have seen that. You would have seen funding provided for it. So, so this contract, at this time, is, it is important for the, for this project. It's an important milestone for the project.
And we have all the dates where all the grant requests and everything have to be submitted by for Texas Parks and Wildlife and any of the other?
Yeah, we've got the various staff, Tom's, working with that. And we're on top of that. But there, it's, we're going to be looking at every, every angle we can to provide the extra funds for that. But there may be, we have some fallbacks on a what-if. So we'll be looking at that. And hopefully congressional efforts to lift the cap or raise the cap are going to be successful. They have not been over the last couple of years, but they will continue. And hopefully, that will get raised and hopefully, we'll benefit from that and that we won't have to come up with that extra $2.6 million to do the project.
So are we locked in to the $6.6 million then, or can they raise it again?
They can raise it. Any more delays on it? Any more delays on it? Their fault, our fault, anybody's fault, we will pay for it.
The Corps has a $7 million cap, period. And they've, their total cap for the design is $6.6 million. The $400,000 was already spent during the feasibility study. So they're capped at $7 million.
We're going to be turning into horses' back ends.
Good.
To make sure this thing stays on track and gets going. Because it's, it has a great potential to turn ugly very fast. But if, looking at the alternative, not doing anything, I'm not sure if that's fair to those folks on the south side. As long as we've been planning this project, as long as this thing's been in the works for over 20 years, I think we probably need to at least make the efforts and still try to, try to get the caps lifted and still apply that pressure. And hopefully, it'll work out.
So bottom line, Tom, this is, there's certainly is some risk involved here in terms of the taxpayer's been on the hook for, exposed to an extra $2.6 million. And we're going to be working to, on several fronts to minimize that risk. But there is some risk going forward. The flip side of that is, I certainly agree with you that this has, this has been a long time coming. And we've seen from the events of the spring that we need to get started as quickly as possible working on some of these flooding issues in Haldom City.
Let me add something just for clarification for the citizens that are watching. And this is something I've said very consistently with our congressional representatives is that the delays, the city can be blamed for a lot of things, a lot of different things, for a lot of different reasons. The delays in this project is in no way, shape, or form the fault of the cities by any lack of oversight or any lack of action on our part. We have done everything we were supposed to do in a timely manner. This has been delays on a federal level. And unfortunately, we are paying for those delays. And we may pay more for delays. But this is not, we did not cause it, but we are paying for it.
And we're going to get it done.
Could be paying for it. It's not set yet, but it's, we're, by executing the contract, that's a risk we're taking, yes.
Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Bennett, you'd stated that the Corps of Engineers have been working on this for 25 years.
Yes.
And that the reason we're able to execute this contract with them right now is because they've completed a design. That's correct?
Correct.
When did they complete this design? I mean, was it last month, last week?
About six weeks ago, it passed their final approvals.
Okay, and then we at the city received it about a month ago?
Yes.
And then looked over it and got it on the agenda?
Right.
The other thing that I wanted to ask is, the Corps, the price is based upon the Corps doing the work? Or are we going to be subcontracting out to private contractors that will do the actual work? Do you know how that's going to be organized from looking over the plans from the Corps?
Yes, the Corps will manage the project and they will contract the work out to subcontractors.
Okay, so their estimates of the price are based upon what the going rate is for private subcontractors? All right.
One thing to think about in all this is, you know, the flooding we had in June, it was pretty bad along Big Fossil Creek. It would have been a whole lot worse if it had been along Little Fossil Creek. Because most of the area along Big Fossil Creek that was flooded was uninhabitable. But along Little Fossil Creek, everything is habitable. So think about that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bennett? Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Any further discussion before we entertain a motion to dispose then? Mr. Sutton.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval of the Little Fossil Creek Drainage Project project cooperation agreement between the City of Haldom City and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Agenda item number five.
Ms. Branson.
That would be for a second, Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project cooperation agreement for Little Fossil Creek Drainage Project with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Any further discussion on the dais? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Item number six is water and wastewater rates. This is consideration and our action regarding the approval of resolution number R2007-014-03 amending Appendix C of the Code of Ordinances and providing for an increase in water and wastewater rates. Mr. Welch, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. Enclosed in your packet is an informational memorandum. And in capturing the thought of it very quickly, basically after the workshops, when we had first talked to the council about the necessity of some adjustments to the water and sewer rates, we began to pull together the July monthly report and really took a long, hard look for the first time at the June purchases and then the June, resulting June sales. And they were, they were, not in a positive way, breathtaking. We saw a falloff of approximately one-third. We only had two-thirds of the purchases and two-thirds of the sales. As we began to measure the implication of those, of that trend with that very, very wet June followed by a nearly as wet July. We did our projections for the end of the fiscal year and we saw numbers that were indeed deeply troubling as far as the fiscal health of the Water and Sewer Fund. We saw a fund that we projected would have an ending fund balance or an ending balance of cash and investments, I should call it, of approximately one month's money, about 8.3%. A few years ago, back in 2003, there was emergency action taken because the projected fund balance had fallen to about 10%. It was around 11%, I think, 10 or 11%. But in looking at this, we saw that the balance had decreased to about 8% or potentially 8%. And we, several of us sat down, including the city manager, and began to talk about the implications of this problem and a strategy for addressing the problem and the, what would happen if we didn't do something about the problem? If we let the problem rock along like it was? Okay, in all fairness and in some background data, the existing water rates that we've had in place and the structure of them have been just fine for the dry weather that we had been experiencing up until this year. You know, normally, as I do the monthly report, I give you a breakdown on what rainfall looks like. And I'll do that very briefly here. Normally, through the first 10 months of a fiscal, of any ordinary fiscal year, we've seen about 30 inches of rain. By this time last year, we hadn't quite made 18 inches of rain and sales were going through the roof. At this, at the 10-month mark of this year, we've seen 48 inches of rain, which well exceeds the annual average for the year of 35 inches. So we'd seen, we had gone from a historically dry to a historically wet all at one time. And so we decided that the approach that we would take is we would analyze our purchases and sales. And we would, using a rolling average of five years, we would develop a, an estimate of what sales would be when you factor in and out extreme highs, extreme lows, make them counterbalance each other, and come up with a number that would represent something that wasn't too high and wasn't too low. And then develop a rate structure that would fit to it. And of course, this was the foundation of the proposal that we made to the council at the workshop on August 4. Well, since we've seen the financial data from June and knowing what's coming because of all of the rainfall in July, we also knew that August sales should be better, but those sales are billed in September. So we will only get one more month of fiscal activity that will help the problem. And so what we did is, with the help of the city manager and putting some other wise heads together, we formulated a four-point plan to attempt to address this problem. And in doing so, bring some fiscal health back to the Water and Sewer Fund, make it more stable, and show the credit markets that we are proactive about the problem. They know that everybody else is having the same problem we are with sales well below. below expectations. So what they're doing is they're watching to see who's gonna move, who's gonna act. You know, who's gonna draw reserves, who's gonna adjust rates, who's gonna do what they have to do to bring it back to a more normal state. So we were looking for a proactive solution to this problem as well. So basically, we are, we're bringing to the, to the council the, the rate proposal, and that is step one of the four-step approach to addressing the water and sewer, uh, financial issue. And of course, step one is, we're asking the council to bring in the rates that we were gonna ask the council to bring for October 1st. We're asking you to bring them September 1st. This is not a, a fix-all in of itself, but it'll get us started one month early on trying to, to bring the fund back to, to fiscal health. It, I, I believe I put in the memo that it could be as much as a $160,000 boost to our, our year-end. The second thing would be that we would use the, the money, some of the resources from the planned certificate of obligation issue. This issue that you passed the notice of intent on at the last council meeting includes $2.5 million to be used for, for water, sewer, street drainage issues. We had planned to try to use operating resources to do about $850,000 in projects. What we're gonna do now is, we're going to use $850,000 of the CO issue to handle these, to relieve the pressure on the, on the utility, and keep us from having to raise rates even higher. So we're trying to control the growth in the rates by making this shift. So that's step two. Step three is, we're, we're still reviewing the water and sewer budget. We want to make changes to the water and sewer budget that will enhance the fiscal position of the budget. It is a bit of a challenge to do that. The mayor asked me about this in the workshop, and that was, if you have a $20 water bill, he said, "How much of the water bill goes to paying Fort Worth water?" Well, the answer to that is, about $8 of a $20 water bill goes to Fort Worth water. On the wastewater side, if your wastewater bill is $20, about $9 goes to Fort Worth water. So if you have a $40 combined bill, $17 goes away, and there's not much we can do about that, um, you know, you know, directly in our budget process. So there's only so much we can work with, and we still have to protect service levels in as much as we can, but it's still possible to make changes in the operating budget that will not hamstring operations. And then the final step is, if, and the final step is a fallback position. It's an only if absolute, absolutely necessary, and we will be briefing the council monthly as we go along, so there will be plenty of advance notice if we feel it's necessary to ask the council to consider the fourth step. But the fourth step would be to, to consider implementing some, some rate structure changes that we would be seeking for fiscal year 09 early. Early by meaning probably the, the summertime of next year. That is, like I said, that's a fallback position. That's gonna be after we've done a very thorough review and have determined there's no other way. I, my own personal thinking is that, that, that's, that's a pretty safe assumption, that we can hold that back and say, that's, that's a last resort, and I think there's a lot of things we can do, and a lot of, a lot of ways we can work this out, but we wanna have that card on the table in case we just have to use it. But in the meantime, the, the, the rates are included in the memorandum and in the, the resolution, which, which is also included. Basically, what would happen, it is, and I have an estimate in here in the, in the notes. Uh, let's see. No, I don't. I have the 2009 estimate in there. But basically, it goes back to the rate increases that we're looking at, are the same ones that were, if I remember correctly, they were between 4% and 5% on water, and it was, gee, I can't remember what the sewer rate was now, I've just drawn a blank, but the sewer rate increase was gonna be a little, it was 9%. I remember now. It was, it was 9%, and that was because of the surcharge from Fort Worth water. But it's gonna be about between 4% and 5% on water, and a little over 9% on wastewater.
Thank you, Joel. Any, any questions from the desk? Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions, Joel. In while you were looking at this, did you have a chance to look and see what other cities are doing in terms, because they've probably had the same problem we've had, is we've had a lot of rain. What are some of the other cities doing that you know of?
What I'm reading, and, and what I'm learning and visiting with a, a lot of the other cities, is that a lot of them are just drawing down reserves for this year, and gonna call it an event instead of a trend, to use a term that you, you used at a previous item. They're, they're treating it as an event rather than a trend.
Is that because their fund balances are higher than ours?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. A lot of these cities have much higher cash and investment fund balances than we have. We maintain a, a fairly modest one. Our goal, of course, established by the council is 20%. We've been working in the 16% to 17% range, but we're losing, potentially losing half of it this year, and, and that's, that's just.
Okay.
Something we, we, you know, we're not, we don't have the luxury of having enough balances to draw down like a lot of them do.
And in the illustration you gave with the $40 bill, where $17 of it were being given to Fort Worth for the usage of the water, and 23 of it goes to Holom City to maintain the infrastructure to provide the water. As we use less water, what happens is, we have a base charge on that water bill, and that base charge cannot pay for the fixed cost of our infrastructure if we don't have enough usage there to, to, to pay off the fixed cost. Is that correct?
We have a $12 base charge on, on water customers, and we did not propose a change in the base rate, in either the base rate for the water or in the base rate for the wastewater. Your base rate is to pay for the costs that, that you incur just because the system exists. We have outstanding debt on the system, and so part of the base rate goes to pay for debt.
I see.
And then there is, there are other fixed costs. There are state mandated costs for, for things like testing and for reporting. And there are certain base costs that we have to maintain, because we have to have certain people who are licensed at certain levels. We can't be a state accredited system. There's a cost of being a state accredited system as well. And so we build those costs into the base rate.
Okay. But whenever you use less water, is that why your fund balance or your fund, your water and sewer fund can get in trouble?
If you use less water, you can still cover those base reason-for-existing costs, but it's the other costs of running the system, the day-to-day costs of maintaining the system, repairing the system, and.
That become at risk, then?
That become at risk, yes.
Okay.
The, the having crews in place that do the work on them.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm glad you straightened that out, because I, I think it's important for, again, it's, it's sort of intuitive to think that if I use less water, I've just, I just don't have to pay for the water. But there's, as you're pointing out, is that, out, out of every dollar that we ordinarily spend for water when times are dry and we're watering alone or whatever, 60 cents of that dollar is doing something besides buying the water. It's getting the water from Fort Worth to our meter. And that's, that's a, that, that cost goes on. That's, that's a, that's a capital and fixed cost there. It's not a, it's not a variable cost, so I think that's what, one of the things we wanted to cover here, and appreciate you taking the time to do that. Any other questions for Joel? All right. I'll consider a motion to disposs then. Mr. Holton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number R 2007-014-03, amending the appendix as it was written.
All right. We have, we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Cabano.
That's for a second, Mayor.
Been moved in second to approve Resolution R 2007-014-03, amending Appendix C of the Code of Ordinances, and providing for an increase in water and wastewater rates. Any, any other discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Item seven, Crime Control and Prevention District proposed fiscal year 2007/8 budget. This consideration interaction on approving the CCPD fiscal year 2007/8 budget. Joel, you wanna keep on swinging?
Very briefly. Basically, what, what happened here is, this is something that could and should have been handled at the conclusion of the public hearing last council meeting. The Chapter 363 of the Texas Local Government Code, which is the governing legislation for crime control districts, require us to hold a public hearing no later than 45 days before the beginning of the fiscal year, and to adopt the budget no later than 30 days before the fiscal year. There's been some changes in the tax code, that changes the timing of when we do things as far as budget hearings and property tax rate hearings and such. So we don't do them the same, you know, where we used to have, you know, hearings at the last council meeting in August. Now we're going first council meeting in September with those hearings. We didn't adjust as well as we should've in taking this into account, and so, in fact, we had the hearing on time, and if, if the council considers the budget and chooses to approve the crime district budget tonight, then we will pass the budget on time. And next year, we will make sure that the, the vote and the public hearing will be held at the same meeting, and we won't do it separately, because it just doesn't need to be separate.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, what are the penalties and consequences for falling behind?
For missing the deadlines?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I think the biggest penalty's on that, and fortunately, the, the, the city attorneys just walked back in. But, most of the time, you have to go back and, and, in most of these cases, you have to publish notices and hold hearings over again, and, and it stops the process, and you have to go back and do it right.
Well, maybe next year, we won't be so focused on the weather, and we'll be able to get this in a timely fashion. Thank you, sir.
I hope we're not so focused on the weather.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Joel? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to disposs. Mr. Sutton.
Mercy, I'll make a motion. Moved to approve proposed fiscal year 2007/8, 2007-08 budget, Crime Control and Prevention District.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's for a second.
Been moved in second to approve the Crime Control and Prevention District proposed fiscal year 2007/8 budget. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Item number eight, Flooding and Erosion Issues. This is update and discussion on recent flooding and erosion issues. Mr. Mayor?
It will be me.
Take it away.
Mayor and council, citizens, I think, last time, I think I split the two items up regarding Skyline and the, and the Big Fossil Creek issue, and I'll do the same thing tonight. Let me start off with Skyline. There's been some, some, some updates with that. This week, we will have, well, let me get, come back to, at the last meeting, I briefed the council that we were, the county, the county's HUD inspectors looked at all the homes that were down there, and that they need to do some follow-up work. And that follow-up work is gonna be happening this week, and hopefully they'll be making some final determinations as far as which homes meet the 51% criteria or more or less. If they're more, they're gonna be, at least from the citizen's standpoint, they're gonna be substandard. FEMA, in a meeting we had with them last week, is wanting the word used, used condemned. Substandard is not sufficient for them. They want to see condemned. So the letters that we sent to these folks a few weeks ago outlining the substandard nature of their homes, we're resending those and updating them a little bit. They'll only be going to the homes that are, that the inspectors have deemed to be 51% or more damaged, or if they currently have no water and no hope for water in the future. The Mobile Home Park has, has given us in writing, at least, I'm sorry, the Mobile Home Park Association has given us in writing, they're, they will not be refishing that waterline, so those 59 homes are, in effect, condemned, and we'll give them a formal notification of that through this letter. We'll copy FEMA on that, and what this'll do is, this will help FEMA and those citizens that were affected go to the next stage of recovery. It'll, FEMA assistance, they'll be put into a different level of FEMA assistance, and they'll be able to do some things. Now, the ones that are still down there, the homes that are still there, that they, that have not suffered that 51% damage, let's say they're 35 or 40 or whatever percentage it is, they'll be able to repair their homes and stay down there if they so choose. They will not have to adhere to the new codes or the flood plan ordinance. But as far as most of the homes that were in the floodway, if, if there was a home in the floodway, I think last week I told you all that they could not reestablish residence down there, and it's still the case. Anybody in the floodway cannot go back down to the floodway. The owners down at Skyline have been active over the last couple of weeks with, taking care of their trailers, either removing the trailers or demolishing the trainers, trailers. And there have been various sort of piles of debris that have been pushed to the curb. The, I think at the last council meeting, the, there was a couple of folks here wanting to know if we would do another run or come by and pick up that material. And, and I think that my response at the time was, well, I'll, you know, we'll consider it, and I'll have to get back to you. And I, I did get back to them last week. FEMA has, wouldn't say advised me, they, they instructed us not to pick up the debris. The debris is on private property, the roads are private property. Even the debris that we've already picked up, we stand to not get reimbursed for from, from FEMA. In all this, we've never expected to get certainly full reimbursement from FEMA, but we thought we might get reimbursed some costs from FEMA. But as far as debris removal that we've already done, we may not be seeing, seeing any of that. But if, as far as new, if we were to go back down there, well, actually, FEMA told us, "Do not do it." So we told that to the, the association president, and we'll be sending it out with the letters that we send to the folks that have been condemned as far as the debris removal. And not, now, not all is lost for them, just like with any other homeowner or whatnot. The homeowner, for debris removal in a situation like this, with the tornado that we had in April, or, or any other disaster, with the high winds that we had a couple of years ago, the owners are responsible for the removal of the debris. Typically, homeowner's insurance covers that debris removal. In this case, as far as this kind of Mobile Home Park, insurance is not a factor or consideration because of, it was, those folks, the vast majority of those folks did not have it, as to where it would, would help with this. So, but there is assistance. The, the resident owners down at, at the park would, could qualify for FEMA assistance for debris removal. The non-resident owners, i.e. landlords, things of that nature, would be able to apply for low-interest SBA loans to help with that debris removal. But that's where, as far as from the debris removal standpoint, it's kind of a hard line to, to take, but that is the instruction we received from FEMA, is that do not go down there to remove it. Admittedly, the debris is getting a stench to it, probably looks, well, it, it, it looks like a war zone, but to some folks, it's, it's a problem down there. It is. But with the actions that we're gonna be taking, as far as with the inspectors and the letters we'll be sending out with the connotations, hopefully this will take it to another level to where we'll be able to receive some aid and some funds to help with the debris removal. But we are looking at other options to see what else we can do to, to, to help with that. Also, as far as from this standpoint, the, the PA process, or the public assistance process from FEMA started last week. We had meetings with a, a different arm of FEMA to start that, that underway. This is, what I mean by public assistance is, starting the process toward the city can be reimbursed, or start the projects that we need to do that, from damage. can be reimbursed, or start the projects that we need to do that, from damage from the flood back then, whether it be bridge work, road work, whatnot. That will, that process is started. It's going to be kind of a long process to go through, but it has started with the FEMA folks last week. I'll take any questions regarding Skyline before, or you want me to go on with?
Mr. Holcomb, you have a question? What's been presented?
Yes, Mayor, thanks. I was just curious, what type of liabilities the city might hold if those debris piles become a health or safety hazard?
Well, we've considered that. From an emergency standpoint, right now, it's very dry weather, if my concern is, and certainly the fire chiefs, is that we're going to have a rainy season coming up here again, and could be. I'm more or less looking at the fall for any weather, but those could be floating projectiles that could be carried downstream, certainly aware of that. And we will go down there and get it. And I don't know what else to do. I think, looking at the public safety from there on down, we mentioned that the FEMA, they understood the problem, did not change their instruction.
So, they're sort of in a roundabout way forcing us to take a reactive approach to that stuff down there? Do you think that'll, will they vary on their decision if it comes to that, you think? Don't know?
You know, I might be able to talk to somebody with FEMA that has a different answer. The folks I talked to, and these are supposed to be managers that I'm talking with, that's the instruction they gave. Now, I can promise you, since that meeting, we've talked with some other folks that gave us a different answer. And the meeting I had with them was supposed to stop all the different answers I was getting, and lo and behold, I'm still getting different answers. I'm going with, at least for now, with the one I was given. And I had all my staff there, I had Mr. Olson there in attendance as well. That's the one we're going with. But from a public safety standpoint, I am not willing to compromise public safety for that. Typically, with the storms that are coming, we kind of know ahead, and we can mobilize and do something. But for now, I'll stay in path with it and follow FEMA's instructions and keep our eyes to the skies.
Thanks, Tom.
You have a question on the Skyline piece? Okay, Tom?
Okay. As far as Big Fossil Creek, and I know we've got some folks here regarding Big Fossil Creek, and I don't have a whole lot else to say other than what I told you all last week. We are still looking at options. We are attempting to apply some additional political pressure from some other folks to get some movement on some things regarding, other than, well, we'll help with the process, and we'll try and expedite it, which is very appreciated, but that's not going to help solve the problems that are up there. From that angle, I don't have much else to say. I think there are several options that are available to us, and I'll probably present those probably in executive session as early as next council meeting, see what can happen with that. But it's, there are various different things that can happen, and they go within varying degrees of millions of dollars, anywhere from, say, two to 14. Obviously, the 14 does not turn me on. Two doesn't turn me on, but two's a lot more palatable than 14. But there are, and how that gets funded and how that gets taken care of, that's the gist of it.
Sure.
And I, with the rhetoric that we hear from the core, I still think there's more they can do. The COG is supposed to have their much ballyhooed report that was supposed to have been given to us last, let me see, they told us in January they'd have it in April, then they told us last month they're going to have it in August, or by the middle of August, I think. They told us in July they were going to have it in the middle of August. This is the last week of August. Still don't have it. I'll be calling them in the morning to remind them of the calendar.
Which August they were talking about, huh?
The, it better be this August. It really better be.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't, I don't have much else to say. I don't want these kind of folks to think that, because I don't have much to say, that we're not dealing with it, that we're not working with it, that we're not, that we've forgotten it. That's certainly not the case. But at the same time, I don't have a whole lot more else to say regarding that. But I'll take any questions regarding Big Fossil Creek.
Questions from the dais?
Regarding that.
Now, we have a citizen who would like to address this, Ms. Leila Caraway. Leila?
Leila Caraway, Fenway Court. I guess, since we're on 20 years on Little Fossil, am I fair to assume we got 15 more years to go?
I hope not.
You're wanting to condemn five years in the last three months here, but I think everybody is well-intentioned, at least with the core level. I mean, from a city level, we're certainly want to do whatever we can to do that. But from the core or COG level, they're sensitive to it, but you were here, you heard the same thing I did from the core. Getting them to move with a sense of urgency is difficult.
Yes.
I think is a fair statement.
And can you advise us what is going on with the, what kind of work you're doing on the dam behind our house? I'm sorry, it's a bridge. It's a bridge. It's been referred to as a dam, the Walkover Bridge?
Oh, the Low Water Crossing Bridge. I think they're just trying to shore back up to preserve whatever's still there, because a lot of the rock around it was washed away.
Right.
And that's what they're trying to put back in, is to look at it. We'll say that one of the options I think that needs to be given in consideration is replacing that low-water crossing. And whether that's, you know, with a bridge that comes up higher, that would be engineered as such to where it would be able to withstand floodwaters with the rising waters, it's going to be submerged in some way, and it's going to have to be engineered as such to withstand that. I think that's going to have to be a consideration for any solution that goes on, certainly upstream around your home, or even farther upstream from where Fenway Court is. There's some consideration everywhere, obviously. Right there, is it adjacent to Fenway Court and Bridgeport? Is that the other street? That's certainly been moved up to the top of the list of needs to look at in that area.
Well, now that we're doing all this stuff on the city side, I thought we couldn't do anything on either side without the core, because that affects the water flow.
I'm not following you.
Okay, your side of the creek and my side of the creek. All this work is taking place, of course, on your side of the creek. I thought there was nothing that could be done to the creek without the core's permission. So, they're involved in this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll say they're involved, and that they're aware. That's about their involvement. That's the limit of their involvement right now.
Well, Tom, even the bridge itself, the core has to be, quote-unquote, involved.
Yeah, the core's going to have to be involved in that as well. Now, whether there needs to be 404 permits filled out for the core or not, that's, you know, I don't know. Part of it would make me think no, but I think it would, that it is a significant change to the flow, because you are speeding up the flow through there. And if you speed up the flow, it's going to either cut different other paths as it traverses through Halton City there.
Well, it quickens the pace of erosion too, doesn't it? Somewhere.
It could, but there are, I mean, there are several factors that go into the erosion issue up there. Part of it is just the extraordinarily heavy rain, amounts of rain that we've had. And a lot of people forget that, that it has been highly extraordinary. It's, I mean, you can plan for that, and planning for that, you know, now you're looking at half million, million-dollar houses up there. I mean, to do that kind of planning, for that to, you can concrete everything, and it's just going to bump up the value of everything if the developer were to do that. Obviously, the developer didn't do that, and even in looking at this, I can't, we can't find any irresponsibility from a developer standpoint, or from a home builder standpoint, or anything along those lines. FEMA issued a LOMAR to do that development up there. So, due diligence was done. Preparing for the rain event that we've had, I think is just, that's part of the issue. At what point do you, what line do you draw? And it's just been an extraordinarily wet, wet spring and summer. It's something we haven't seen in many, many years, and hopefully, we won't see it again. But there's nothing to say we won't see it next week, tomorrow, whatnot. I mean, it could happen again.
Come on back up here and talk in the microphone. That way, the people at home can hear you too.
While your guys are down there, they might want to come back around the bend and clean out all our debris, our fences and things, because it's made a huge dam right there too. So, our next big rain event, it's all coming downstream again.
Okay. I'll have to take a look at that, see what we can do from an emergency standpoint. Because I can't, because a lot of that's still private property. I got, there's, as much as I'd like to do it, there's problems with it, but there may be some other ways we can do that. But I'll get with staff, and we'll see what we can do.
Any other comments on the flooding and erosion issues? All right. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances and resolutions. Item number nine, taxation on goods, of goods in transit. This is conduct a public hearing and consideration interaction regarding the approval of ordinance 02007-019-03 for a first reading. It provides for taxation of goods in transit exempt under Subchapter B, Chapter 11, Section 11.253b Tax Code, and not exempt under any other law. Joel?
That's a mouthful there.
This is for a first reading. Help me out here.
Yes, sir. Basically, what we're doing tonight is we're asking the council to conduct a hearing in compliance with the law concerning this new freeport exemption that was created by the last legislature. It, in fact, is the House Bill 621, which created this exemption, or the addition to the Tax Code, was actually the enabling legislation resulting from Senate Joint Resolution 6 in 2001, which was approved by the voters back in November of 2001 for the creation of this freeport exemption. The city already participates in a freeport exemption that has existed since 1990. This freeport exemption allows you to have in a warehouse in Halton City on January 1st of the year inventory that is only here temporarily. They define temporarily as being less than 175 days, and it's stopped here temporarily, and it's here at January 1st, but it will be gone, and it's leaving the state. If it's in that case, then you can claim freeport exemption, and that inventory is exempt from taxation. What this new section that was created by House Bill 621 does is it creates another exemption that says if on January 1st, this inventory is in a warehouse that does not belong to the person who owns the inventory, that inventory can be claimed to be in transit, you know, as long as it leaves within 175 days, and it doesn't have to leave the state. It can move across the state, across town, across the street. Now, when we first found out about this bill, and it was passed, the appraisal district sent out a report to all of the entities in Tarrant County, and basically gave us a really good rundown on the impact of our current freeport, and then the projected impact of this new freeport. Our current freeport exempts about $21 million in value from taxation, and that's a revenue loss to the city of about $124,000. And like I said, we've been doing this for years. The new exemption would add $39 million to the total, pushing the total amount exempted to $61 million. The cost and revenue to the city of the $39 million would be almost $223,000. Now, after we took a look at that number and gulped real good, we read in the bill that basically, if a city decides that they do not want to do this, or if any of the other entities that are subject to the freeport exemption don't want to do this, they have to do two things. They have to hold a public hearing, and then they have to pass an official action of the city council, which in this case is the ordinance that's been submitted. For reference purposes, a number of the cities have been discussing this. I've talked with a half a dozen cities, most of which are up here in the northeast corridor. The cities around here are actually talking about entering into an interlocal agreement whereby all of them covenant to opt out, just as we're doing right now. We're a little ahead of the ballgame in comparison to the other cities. We're the first one to actually be bringing a measure to our governing board to consider, and the first ones to be holding a public hearing. But it is my understanding from visiting with the other northeast cities and with some other cities around Tarrant County, that opting out is going to be the direction that we're all going to take at this point. So, we're just actually just a little bit ahead of the ballgame on this one. But what we'll do here, of course, is we'll have a public hearing, and then at the conclusion of the public hearing, if the council so chooses, they can pass the ordinance on the first reading, and then it'll come back for the second reading at next council meeting.
Do you mind?
No.
If this, if we did not opt out, what would this equate to as far as tax rate, as far as what we would lose?
If we wanted to recover the $223,000 in addition that it would cost us, we would have to increase the tax rate 1.44 cents.
Any questions from the dais for Mr. Welch?
Mayor, I think, in the back, we discussed, we use Sara Lee for an example, and I think that would, could we use that example out here so that your Sara Lee example, to talk about how if we didn't do this, they could perhaps sublease their warehouse over there and?
The scenario, yes, ma'am, the scenario that we painted was that Sara Lee, once this law goes into effect, decides that they want to exempt.
And this is hypothetical.
This is hypothetical.
They're not doing this. It's just a what-if.
Yeah.
What-if.
But, for instance, if they were to decide they wanted to do this, they're, the freezer that they're building, and of course, by freezer, we mean 180,000 square foot freezer, 40 feet tall. If they, and it's going to be full of literally millions of dollars of inventory. Right now, on January 1st, they can claim a freeport exemption for the part of that inventory that will leave to go to the other four states besides Texas, that this inventory is going to be shipped to. If we allow this to go into place, they can declare exemption for the entire inventory, because it would be going in Texas and out of Texas. All they would have to do at this point is basically sell their freezer to another company, or possibly even, according to what the city attorney said in the workshop, possibly sell it to another operating unit of Sara Lee, execute a lease agreement, and they would be able to exempt the entire inventory from taxation. And as such, I mean, literally, millions and millions of dollars of inventory would disappear from the ability for us to tax it.
Ms. Reese?
That's if we opt out or we don't opt out?
If we don't opt out, that could happen.
And if we do opt out, how does that protect us? Because there's multiple freezers, like what
Because there's, there's multiple freezers, like what you're describing, over on the Alliance Airport, not Alliance, Meacham Airport area?
Railhead.
Railhead, yes, that have multiple companies under one freezer name. And how could, I mean, how can this protect us, or can it?
In our particular case, what would happen is the inventory that is temporarily stored in Sara Lee's freezer, that is heading out of state, is covered under the freeport exemption that we already have. The part that is not leaving the state of Texas would still be taxed. If we opt out. If we don't opt out, the whole thing becomes covered under freeport and is not taxable. So this is how we protect ourselves, is at least the portion that's staying in Texas would still be, would still be on the tax roll.
Okay, well, you called it, you said this was like truth and taxation. Okay, so with, with truth and taxation being the phrase you used, how do we truthfully know what they're truly doing and where those trucks truly go? Because 90% of them, you know, don't go to where they say, because they have multiple stops.
They will, when they render their inventories to the taxing authorities, they'll have to tell the taxing authorities then what, what's going where approximately. They'll have to give some, some good faith estimates. And I'm sorry, that's the best answer there is.
We're, by opting out, we're basically preserving what we currently do.
Yes, sir. By opting out, we're going to leave the situation status quo.
And, and this would apply to the wholesalers on 121, to anybody? I mean, I know we're kind of picking on Sara Lee here, but I mean, it's anybody that carries an inventory.
And Sara Lee is a good neighbor, and we don't really mean to pick on them. They were just a for instance in this case. But it applies to any of the businesses that, that have business inventories that are, exist for distribution somewhere, that are within the city limits of Halton City.
So let me ask you this. Before they were Sara Lee, they started out State Fair Foods. State Fair Foods and Sara Lee has always been partnered up. So was there ever an effect through Halton City with, because their freezer, even though they've not, didn't have a huge one, their freezer still held? Other products for other...
Well, actually, what they had there was mainly just a manufacturing. Their freezer actually was in Railhead, over in Fort Worth. And then they, and they were, that was something they were leasing from somebody else.
Right, but they did store for quite a while there before it changed over to Sara Lee.
Oh, when it was State Fair?
Yes.
Okay.
And we were, I'm sorry, the companies were picking up Sara Lee product under State Fair. That's why I was asking my questions, is I know that they're supposed to be honest, but it is what it is.
Unfortunately, you're, it's, a lot of it's the honor system.
They, yes, they render for January 1st, and, and it's what they say. They can't say 100%. It's not realistic for them to say 100%. But it'll be the percentage that they render. And that'll be true with any of the other companies that have business inventories that are going to be shipped somewhere, either in Texas or out of Texas. They have to render it that way.
And basically, where it gets caused, when they go through their annual audits, that they have to do with their cert, with their certified public accountants. And they have those sworn statements for their stockholders. That's where it's supposed to be caught. Similar to what we do with our auditors. But understanding that that's where it's supposed to happen. That's the way it's supposed to happen. But, but you're right. I mean, you're, you're absolutely right.
Any, any other questions for, for Joel? Then I'll open up the public hearing and invite anybody in the audience to come up and, and make comments. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. This, this will be, will be seeking a motion on an ordinance, oh, two double oh seven dash oh one nine dash oh three, for first reading. Oh, Mr. Oakham?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number zero dash two zero zero seven dash zero one nine dash zero three, regarding the approval of taxation for goods in transit, first reading.
Mr. Sutton?
Just for a second?
Uh, Mrs. Hutchinson?
Uh, I guess that's a third.
Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded to, to approve ordinance oh, two double oh seven dash oh one nine dash oh three, first reading. Any further discussion? Please rest your vote. That is unanimous. Next public hearing is item 10, proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2007, 2008. We'll conduct a public hearing regarding the adoption of the fiscal year 2007, 2008 tax rate. Okay? Joel?
Chapter 26 of the Texas Tax Code, which governs property taxes for virtually all levels of government in Texas, requires that any governmental body that intends to adopt a tax rate that will generate more revenue than they received from property taxes in the previous year must hold two public hearings. And as such, at the August 13 regular session of the council, the council by record vote established a proposed maximum tax rate of 59.83 cents. This, this tax rate is higher than the effective tax rate. And thus, we are having to conduct the two public hearings in compliance with the code. And this tax rate does not exceed the rollback rate, because the tax rate is broken up into two pieces, maintenance and operations, and debt service. Both of these numbers are increasing. The, 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 the operations and maintenance rate is increasing to 39.3978 cents, or 39.78 cents. The interest and sinking rate would be increasing from 18.8 cents to 20.05 cents. But the, the key factor is that the rollback O and M rate would be 39.7839 cents. And the rate being considered is 39.78. So it is beneath the rollback threshold. This proposed tax rate would generate an estimated $9,138,000 levy. The levy for fiscal year 07 was $8,375,000. It's a basic difference of about $763,000. About 39% of this increase goes to debt service, and the remaining 61% goes to the, the operations of the general fund. And built in, or assumed in this rate is approximately a 98% collection rate. It, by that, I mean, 98% of this levy will be collected in the, the year in which it's levy. The remaining 2% will take longer than one year to collect. But we, we recommend that the mayor conduct the public hearing, take comment, close the hearing, and then announce that there will be a public hearing at the next council meeting on September 10th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that there will be a record vote of the city council on September 20, of actual vote on the ordinance to adopt the tax rate on September 24th in the city council chambers at 7:00 PM here at City Hall.
Any questions for Joel? Thank you, Joel. Then in that instance, I'll open the public hearing for comments on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2007, 2008. We'll start with Ms. Yvonne Edens.
I'm Yvonne Edens, 1421 Oaknold Drive, Halton City, Texas. Halton City has been 40 years behind in keeping up with their infrastructure, in keeping up with the needs of the Sid, not only the city, but also the citizens. But a lot of the citizens have just set back. And, well, nothing's wrong, why fix it? There are parts of the city in this town that are, have small water lines. The drainage lines need to be enlarged. The entire infrastructure of the whole city. There's a little town in central Texas, in 2002, or 2000, had a 12,000 population. And it was a neat little city to raise your children. Church on every corner, basically a retirement town. And they, too, were just hand in hand with Halton City. The only difference was Halton City was twice the size at that time is what this little central Texas town was. 14 miles from the geographic center of Texas. People couldn't understand, or some people said, I don't understand why we can't get something done in this city. And I lived in that little town. I moved in that little town in 1961. And I, I, I didn't like the scenario of way it was approached to me about what it would take to fix things in that little city. So I just kind of put it off. But now I understand it. I didn't understand it then, but now I do. Since then, I continue to go down there, because I have relatives still living in that area of town. It's unbelievable. It's still half the size of Halton City. There's businesses, there's infrastructure, there's new roads, there are new bridges going over, under, over railroad tracks where you used to have to go under flooding all the time, tornadoes. If it ever got in a hole, that little town would be destroyed. But it hit the outlying areas. Same scenario is what Halton City's gone through. I don't want to say what's happened to this little town, but it's unbelievable how much they have progressed. JCPenney's moved out. Other things moved out of town. Finally, that little town bought where JCPenney's was on a corner lot and turned that into a city park. That little city now has medians that are green. That little city has little businesses that have come in. It has become the center of the surrounding community. And it's unbelievable of what they have accomplished. But yet, we sit here and we don't do nothing. It's not because of you elected people. It's because of the people out here that do not want to face up what has to be done. Some of you elected have gone and stayed with some of those people and kept things low. Some of you voted against it on this last time to went for the low rate. And I know that some of you voted against it because you wanted the higher rate. You know that the city needs it. The column in the newspaper, there was a phrase in there by a well-known columnist, and the title of his article was "Halton City Is Seeing High Cost of Pits and Pennies." How else and how appropriate it could be? It's, I don't know. We've, we've come a long way. We still have a lot of ways to go. This is my hometown. I was born here. That little central city town is where my ancestors came from. And their little home, their first log cabin was destroyed by a tornado, but that didn't stop them back in the 1800s. But this little town, my hometown, is status quo and has been for over 40 years. And I think it's high time that some of you took notice and do something about it instead of saying, or trying to blame somebody else, or saying that we need to keep it low. It's time to come up. And the citizens need to support their town.
Thank you, Ms. Edens. Anyone else wish to speak on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2007 and 2008? Mr. Eklund, please introduce yourselves.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ray Eklund. I live on Oakwood Terrace here in Halton City. Mr. Mayor, I haven't been gone that long that you can't remember who I am. About the tax rate, something very peculiar happened this year. And maybe the attorney will straighten me out. I didn't get a chance to see him before. But something very peculiar happened this year, and I don't believe it's ever going to happen again, ever. The Birdville School District, under state mandate, for some reason or another, is going to lower their tax rate by 16.7 cents per hundred. 16.7 cents. Two of the institutions at the county level are lowering theirs by half a cent a piece, so that's another cent. Now, I think the, yeah, everybody's thinking politically. The lawyer's going to think legally. And correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Joel back there will think financially. Oh, good, I'm glad you're here. You, Joel mentioned 1.4 cents about taxes would raise $223,000. The question I'm going to ask him here in a minute, or help us out, is what does one penny, or what does 17 cents raise in tax money? My belief is that the city of Halton City could have, and probably should, raise their taxes per hundred by at least 10 cents per hundred. Now, it sounds huge, and it is huge for a city, but we've got a one-year opportunity here. Because these other institutions lowered their tax rate, okay? We can slide in there and not, actually at 10 cents, lower my tax bill, at 15 cents, lower my tax bill from this year. Now, what does that get us for our city? Well, I'm sure a lot of people like to scream, "Oh gee, you're raising my taxes." But as the seniors reminded us last year, you can't lose what you ain't got. Okay, so we'll end up actually saving my tax bill a penny or two per hundred and being able to push a couple million or $3 million into our funds. However you guys want it. I guess the general fund. Now, maybe somebody can correct me on my thinking. Maybe we can't raise taxes 15 cents. Maybe we don't have the political willpower to do it. But it's an interesting thing that I think will only happen this year, because of the state mandating to the, to the school districts. Next year, the school districts will not be able to drop another 15 cents, or probably any, and they will adjust their budgets. And this is a one-time shot for us. I'd like to thank Ms. Edens in that we have got to raise the bar. If I'm not mistaken, your last meeting, and I sat back there and I beat my head against the wall for I don't know how many years, talking about this up here. So I left early last time. But if I'm not mistaken, last time, we set the bar that we can't go above. And we set that bar kind of low, again. Now, politically, there's always discussion about rollback elections. And gee, who's going, you know, we don't want to go through all that mess. Well, frankly, who's going to do it? Okay? Who's going to go through all the trouble of a rollback election, okay? Over a couple pennies here and there? Okay? I, I think you guys, once again, have set the bar too low. If you set it high to start with last meeting, you're always free to lower it back down this meeting. So in the meantime, I'm sure we could all use our political willpower and our, you know, you got elected by 75%, so it shouldn't be a problem to convince those 75% of the voters that this is a good thing, if you really thought it was a good thing. So my idea would bring in $3,300,000, unless Joel tells me different. Thank you.
While he's coming up to tell you what a, go, go ahead and tell everybody else what a penny is, Joel. Did, did you also ask for what 17 cents? Is that, is that what I heard you say?
No, actually, you could raise it 17.7, and we'd break even.
17.7 cents?
We would break even. My tax bill would not be $1 higher than it is today.
How much money that would generate, 17.7 cents?
It's each penny, based upon our, our net taxable value, would generate about $155,000.
So if you get your calculator and multiply that from 17.7, I got mine here.
I don't have my abacus with me.
I do. Anyway, we can do that.
That's okay.
Basically, he's almost 10% higher than what I told you.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be a lot of money. 17.7 cents would be a lot of money.
No, $3 million's a lot of money, okay? It won't cost me a dime, and I appreciate it.
Oh, there you go.
All right. Anyone else want to speak on the proposed rate? Mr. Watkins?
Bob Watkins, 6140, Blue Springs Circle. Well, this is all, we're discussing something now that we're going to build these barn doors and out all the horses that got out, but his figure was what I said last week, I think I would have gone for. I think you must have missed that 10 cents was my figure. At the budget workshop, what was discussed, and what is always discussed at such budget workshops, is seldom things that we want, it's things that we need, and we set, we need this, and if we put up, if we raise the tax this much, we get this, and if we need this, we need this. And pretty much what we need, if I'm not incorrect, it would have required 11 cents, I believe, was the figure that would have hit what, most of what we needed. And there was a, I don't know what you call it, it's illegal to be carrying out a straw vote, but there was a consensus taken that a little less than half of that would be a nickel. What disappoints me is not as much the fact that you didn't, that we're not raising the tax the nickel. What disappoints me is, one more time, this council has done the same thing they did on the senior tax freeze. They didn't put it before the citizens to discuss. I don't think, I might be sitting up there and be a gutless wonder and be afraid I was going to get recalled, or that there was going to be a rollback. I might do that, I don't know, don't think so, but I might. But there was no chance of that happening if y'all had allowed the higher price to be set so that it could be discussed tonight. There's not anybody here to discuss it. Ms. Edens got up and discussed it, he discussed it, I'm discussing, but it's over, that can't be done. There would have been some people here tonight, and I'm not going to tell you that over half of them wouldn't have said that, taking me out and tarred and feathered me or something, I'm not going to tell you that. But I think that the citizens of Halton City deserve to come up here and discuss something before all the horses get out. And I'm just disappointed one more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else, please come up and introduce yourself. This on the proposed tax rate?
Yeah, I think this is going to cover that infrastructure as well, isn't it, that tax rate?
Well, it's specifically about the tax rate.
Well.
It's not about infrastructure, per se.
Well, then I'll wait for the next one.
You want to wait for the, okay, all right, okay, Bill. Anyone else want to speak in the public hearing? Mr. Lewis, you want to come up and introduce yourself?
I have just $2.6 million out.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm Jack Lewis, I live at 4600 Savelle. And I want to thank the mayor and the three councilmen who, in the budget, tried to hold the rate down, it is going up. I like the effective tax rate because it's more effective, that's why they named it "effective." I want to thank the city manager, we've got a good city manager, he's paid well. He came up with a budget, I understand during the work session, that would not require a tax rate increase. There's a difference in tax increases and tax rate increases. The town appraisal district did the job for all of the taxing entities by raising the appraisal values, which brings in more revenue, growth brings in more revenue, fees bring in more revenue. And on this senior tax freeze, that's not hurting. Anyone that blames the seniors for not paying the bills, this country, the World War II people, they pay their bills, and they play their part. And we still like lower taxes, that's why I appreciate you guys staying in there with what you can live with. I'm not going to come up here and try to tell you how to plan the budget, that's y'all's job. Y'all've done it. And I would still like to see it considered to be that effective tax rate. Now, when the city manager, and we've been there, when the city manager recommends something, that's what we're paying him for. So I would wish that you folks might would consider listening to your city manager on whatever rate you're going to set. But we appreciate what you have done. I know we have droughts, and we have water, this has been going on ever since Adam and Eve, and we have problems, we have challenges, but we've got to work together, and we'll pay our fair share. So we appreciate you guys, the time y'all spend up here, and would hope that you will continue to consider keeping costs down so that the people that live here, they have problems with revenue and expenses, just like a city does. In fact, the city is people, so we appreciate you guys' consideration, and thank y'all for your time and effort on coming up with this proposal at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else want to speak on the public hearing here for the proposed tax rate? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other comments from the deists? Just once more for good measure, want to tell everybody that there will be a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2007 and '08 that will occur at 7:00 PM at the council chambers at City Hall on September the 10th. There will be a vote on the tax rate, proposed tax rate for 2007 and '08. That will occur at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall on September the 24th. And be no other action to take place on this item tonight. Any further discussion? Mr. City Attorney, are we good to go?
You covered everything you needed to.
All right, Ms. Reese?
Mayor, I just wanted to make just a statement. I am one of the ones that was for the nickel, and a lot of it is, and Mr. Lewis alluded to the fact that the city has revenues, expenditures, and when I hear that, I'm thinking about our city employees. And yes, we're taking some proactive steps today to increase their salaries, but you know what, guys, these kids out here that are working here, that have babies, that have those expenses, they can't afford it, you know? And yes, our infrastructure's bad, it's been bad for years. We've got flooding problems, we've had them for years, we've got street problems, they've been there for years. My whole stand, my whole philosophy is, I need to stand up and say, that's not what I'm okay with today at home. If I want my house to increase in value, you know, Mr. Lewis obviously got a good deal, mine decreased. So my property taxes, yes, they went down, yes, the school taxes are going down, but if you look at, I had requested at the last meeting, you know, a pie chart to show what the city taxes are versus all these other entities that Mr. Eklund referred, we don't pay hardly anything on city, you know, and I look at our new fire station, that's a blessing. I look at the qualified employees we have throughout, that's a blessing, but when we have an experienced tenured employee leave because we can't afford to take care of them, that hurts us, that sets us way back, and I want to know that if my house catches on fire, and a firefighter that's encouraged to work here every single day knowing they can go elsewhere and make more, will come put my fire out. If I have a robber come in my house, I want to know that officer's going to be there, Johnny on the spot. I want to know that if the main blows in front of my house, I've got a water crew to come take care of it. Right now, I, no, I'm not confident, and it has nothing to do with our city manager or our department heads, it's city as a whole, city as a whole. I've told these employees, you're not important enough to me, so don't fix my street, don't fix my drains, don't fix this, don't, just don't. And I'm going to keep your pay lower so I don't have to worry about getting a rollback happen. I don't need to worry about a recall. You know, I'm passionate on my feelings and my opinions, I have the experience of a municipal pay coming into my home, I know the effects. My son is a municipal employee of another city. And I'm amazed, I'm amazed. We've got good people all throughout our city, and we're losing them, we're losing them. We lost a sergeant several months back, went to another city, entry level, just so he could get better benefits. What has that done to us? One more officer, gone, just, we're down one more cop. You know, I mean, you look at our vehicles, it's, I could sit here and go on and on and on and on, and I've kept my mouth shut for three years, and, you know, my theory is, if I'm not liked, you know, go to the polls and tell me, I don't like you, Kim, go away. I'll go away. You know, I'm not going to leave Halton City because this is home, but I'm proud of my home. I'm very upset with the fact that we're not giving our citizens that chance to come talk to us. You know, I want to hear what everybody wants. I was elected by however many elected me, I don't even remember the number, I was elected by whatever that number is to ask me to do what should be in their best interest, but if I'm not letting them tell me, I'm not doing my job. And if I'm not doing my job, then I need someone up here that's going to do the job the citizens of Halton City want to have done. You know, I don't know what else, and yes, I'm venting, yes, I'm upset, I apologize. If my decisions have offended anyone, I'm sorry, this is my home. I've got children here, I've got grandchildren here that are going to grow up here because we chose here as home. You know, and Ms. Edens's story touched me, I know where she's referring to, and I can go on a list of communities that have done what we're doing right now, and they walked across that bridge, and they're okay. And I'm scared we're going to be forgotten, so, thanks.
Okay. Well, I do want to wrap it up and say that, while I appreciate all the remarks that have been said, I do believe that this council has been responsible. We've raised the tax rates here several years in a row, we've done it slow and steady, but we've made some huge, huge steps in this city. And I stand by my vote. I know there's a time to be aggressive, and there's a time to be astute and take proper measure. We're going to, we're going to make some, or at least, we've got a proposal that we've seen tonight that is going to go a long way to put our employees in good stead. And I'm proud of this council, I'm proud of this community, and I think we're doing the right thing, and we'll see. I mean, if it comes down to the next council election is between the folks who, oh, the folks who only wanted to raise the tax rate just under the rollback rate, and those who wanted to raise the tax rate higher, and if that's an item of interest in the next election, glory hallelujah, you know? It'd be the first time that we've had an election in Halton City arguing about how high the taxes are supposed to be instead of how low. So that'd be fun. Ms. Bransom?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to address the comments from the individuals that have said we haven't allowed the citizens to speak. When it was first brought to the attention that we, there was a proposal on the table to go over the rollback rate, I heard from more citizens than I've heard from in quite some time. Not everyone is comfortable getting up and talking every week in front of the microphone, or once a month in front of the microphone, or in front of the microphone at all. Some individuals prefer to call someone on the phone, or have a conversation with them in their living room. So a public forum like this is not perfect for every citizen in Halton City. But I did hear from more citizens than I've heard from in quite some time. Last week, I probably could have, or week before last, I could have given you the count. I have the names written down by my phone at home, and there were some very enlightening conversations. So for those of you who say we have not given the opportunity for citizens to talk to us, our phone numbers are published, a lot of citizens know how to get ahold of us, and I heard from citizens that I had never met before that felt like they needed to talk to someone and express their opinion. So I just wanted to give a counterbalance to those that had the impression that people would show up here and speak. I have no doubt that the chamber room would have been filled, but there's more individuals than that out there that are not comfortable in this type of setting that would like, that have chosen a different avenue to express their opinions. So, I don't know, maybe some others had that same experience, maybe I was the only one.
You were not the only one.
Mr. Clark?
Whoops. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Didn't mean to promote you there, yeah?
Right. He knows my wine. What I want to say in defense of Kim, and in defense of the people who voted the way they voted last council meeting, as I understood the purpose of that vote, we were not voting to raise the rate a nickel, we were voting to allow people to discuss raising the rate a nickel, and not six cents, seven cents, or a dime. It was just to allow people to come and talk about the nickel. We weren't proposing, we were, I would say that we were in favor of the nickel we would like to have, but we were still open for people to come and make an expression, here, reference the nickel, where we could say in response of the nickel what the city would get. And we had a list, I assume that if you came up and asked for it, you had a list too, that you may have, at the end of the meeting, decided that $4 a month for what you were going to get may have been what you wanted, and it would have been discussed more tonight. We didn't come to the council to raise it a nickel, we just came to allow everybody to discuss a nickel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Well, as you can see, we've got an ongoing discussion going on up here, and I assume out there in the community as well, and that's what democracy is all about. I think we've already, I've already said the things I need to say about items 10, so let's go on to the next item on the agenda. It's be the Visitor Citizens Forum. It's time to set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form, and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. First up to bat is Mr. Bill Journay, wants to talk about infrastructure.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, first of all, I would like to say, most definitely, I do think we have a good council, and you guys have never turned me down when I wanted to say something, of course. Okay, this is about, well, an article in the paper here a few days ago about not knowing exactly where funds are coming from to do some rebuilding or infrastructure to our city. Our leaders have never ceased to amaze me. They want to create a new and beautiful facade that will hopefully bring others to us, perhaps a more cultured and better financially endowed group of folks, somewhat like our silk-stalked neighborhood, neighbors to our north and east. You're going to pursue this imagination with tax monies extracted from the poor, elderly, and vulnerable under your charge and keeping, running some of us out of our homes. How many of you are sure this crapshoot's going to work? But then, doing this with our money and not your own, leadership can afford to, can afford the gamble? Are there not other ways to bring others to us? Are you sure crime and adversity will not follow your efforts? Or is this any of our business? You've already reached the pinnacle of success and height, and the height of your incompetence, and the people of which you serve should understand- people of which you serve should understand that there are other goals and ambitions we should help you with, that don't necessarily concern us, but where we will be obliged to sacrifice and pay for it. Uncle Ray must say, you can hide the fire, but what you gonna do about the smoke? I've got a few questions, rhetorical, of course. They don't require an answer, but neither does an election require a vote. If you have access to the funds you desire, what would be so terribly wrong with making us safe and free again? Or does present-day commerce prevent it? Must we fear leaving our own homes at any hour for the sake of commerce? Or have you any answers for ending our highway casualties and neighborhood crime? Should this not be your first priority and concern? Have you viable reasons for putting commerce before public safety? Yes, we'd like a response. And without a Judas kiss. Now, a quote, "I recognize the superiority of a man by the greater or lesser degree of cleverness with which he uses the art of lying. Those who would rule the world have hope in habitual liars." Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to the Visitor Citizens Forum? Mr. Eckland?
My name's Ray Eckland. I live on Oakwood Terrace here in Haltum City. Regarding the tax vote and the things that we hear here, I've heard the discussion that, I get lots of phone calls at home, but the people don't wanna come down here. I find it amazing that people can't come down here and speak their piece, especially when they know there's other people gonna come down here and speak their piece that might be opposite of it. Regarding the record vote and the tax discussion, we've heard strong statements tonight asking for a higher tax rate. Maybe, I wasn't here long enough last meeting, maybe you heard some last meeting as well, we heard the words about a nickel here this evening. The record vote was taken on the 13th of September at the last meeting. Tonight, we're discussing a vote, but we won't be voting, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor. We won't be voting tonight. You said we will vote on this matter on the 24th. We'll have another meeting, open hearing on the 10th of September. Today is, if I'm not mistaken, the 27th of August. The way I understand, and I'm sure the attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, and the city secretary, we can, in fact, have a meeting every four days. Every four days. Alright? You give the public three days' notice, you can have another meeting. You can give them another three days' notice and have another meeting. In fact, if you just go ahead and make all the notices every day, you can have a meeting every day, four days hence. So, with that in mind, we had the record vote that brought us, I guess, 3.7 cents last two weeks ago. And if we're really interested in raising the bar in the city, and we're really interested in listening to the public, three of which came up here and asked for a higher rate, one of which never wants to pay any taxes, I don't think we can wait till the next election, Mr. Mayor, to start bringing this city forward. We saw the problems with our infrastructure. We saw terrible tragedy on the north end of town. The nice man spoke earlier, my end of town would be even worse if we got hit with it, because our area is all inhabited. We cannot put those issues off one more day. The law requires us to put it off three more days. I'm asking the council, and I know that you can't do it tonight, because it's not on the agenda, we all understand about that. But you can make a new agenda when you leave here, and you can post a new agenda as soon as you can. The secretary's shaving her head in old, but pretty soon, pretty soon you could post one. Now, it may require that you come down here on Monday holiday, may come down here on Saturday night. I really don't care. Whenever you do it, I'll be here. Because this city needs every single dime we can put into the pot. And as I spoke earlier, it's not gonna raise my net taxes at all. You got a big, long run to raise my taxes because of the blessing from the school district. I'm not interested in any tax rate that endangers my family or my neighbors. If it's, like we discussed, I would love to hear a factual statement, which y'all are allowed, about the meeting dates. Is there any reason we can't have a meeting in four days, five days, eight days, which would allow us a couple more meetings stuck in here before we vote? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Well, as you know, we can't discuss it here, so...
You can give me a factual statement.
Yeah, I can, and the factual statement is, we can't discuss it, Ray.
Mr. Mayor, now, if you can give a factual statement, can we or can we not have a meeting for this?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not inclined to have a meeting in four days. We've met about this, and, you know, I'll tell you, I'll be glad sometime later on down the line to, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a commitment that tonight.
You don't answer the factual statement?
No. I'm not gonna commit to another meeting tonight.
In four days is the first Haltum High game, so no, they won't have a meeting in four days. Yes.
Any other discussion on the Visitor Citizens Forum? Please come forward.
Bob Watkins, 6140 Blues Brew Circle. Well, I'm getting older, but I don't seem to be getting any smarter. I used to never get up, except at this time, so that I wouldn't get broadsided after I left and sat down. I, too, get a lot of calls. You have no idea how, as a non-elected, ever-elected official, how many people stroll across the street and tell me what they think. I'll admit, some of them tell me I'm crazy, and some of them tell me I'm crazy about this particular item. But this is an issue that I just want everybody to think about for next year. I'm not gonna be like Ray. It wouldn't make any difference how often we meet. Last time y'all made the decisions, and I'm gonna say it again, our hands are tied because you didn't set the bar higher. I hate that phrase. Because you didn't set the rate higher so that we could discuss it tonight and next time. But next time, it'd be real nice if somebody allowed the citizens the right to come up here and sit. And if y'all think I'm comfortable up here, you're wrong. There's a lot of people out there, though, that say that I'm more comfortable than they are, and they'd like for me to get up here and continue to harass y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Anyone else wanna speak to the Visitor Citizens Forum tonight? Seeing none, I'll close this part of the agenda, move on to item 11. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 12, appointment or reappointment boards. Ms. Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a reappointment of Sonny Elliott back to the place one on ZBA, as it says. Okay, whatever.
Yeah, it's an alternate.
I think it's a combination, it's altern... The, that's what that is, I think.
Okay. Any discussion? Then please register your vote. That is unanimous. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to... On place one on zoning board of adjustments.
Alright, please register your vote. Any other, then I will follow with one. This is to Anderson, to the Veteran and Animal Advisory Committee. Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Any other appointments? And there are no excused absences to deal with, and I understand there is no items on the executive session, so this meeting is adjourned.